Okay. We're good. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Village of Mariner planning board meeting of April 14th, 2021. For purpose of minutes, I am going to take attendance of our participants here. I'm Kathleen Sable, the chair. With us are the members of the planning board, Richard Littman, Cindy Goldstein, John Verney, and Ellen Styler. We have with us Teresa Baker, our land use attorney, Esteban Garcia, our consulting engineer, Frank Tavolachi, the building inspector, Dennis Drogen, Assistant Building Inspector, I think, I don't know your title, yes, and Stephen Gates, who is our planning consultant this evening from AKRF. And is Susan, I think Susan, she sent an email, she'd see us later. So Susan Oakley.
I do see Susan on.
Okay, and Susan Oakley, who's our landscape architect consulting. Okay. We're going to approve minutes from February 24th meeting, and then we are going to take the site plan review applications for 680 Barrymore and 1069 Bayhead, because the applicant's representative is cheating on us tonight and going to another land use municipality board, another municipality board meeting right after this. Then we are going to take administrative action 5A Van Rans Place, because it's fast and easy, and then we are going to come back to the agenda and have a discussion about 1258 East Boston Post Road, and another one about 131 High Street. Okay? Everybody keep up with those stages? Okay. We have before us draft minutes assembled by the wonderful minute person, Barbara Ritter, for review and comment. Anybody have any comments at all on these minutes? No, I know, I don't have any either.
They were good, they were good.
Very good, very good. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. Okay. Ellen?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. We need to promote, I guess, Michael Stein for both Barrymore and Bayhead. We'll start with, we'll start with Barrymore. Tonight, I believe we're just passing the resolutions, so we shouldn't have much to discuss.
Good evening. Thank you again tremendously for switching things around a little.
No problem. I think, and Susan and Esteban can certainly jump in, but with all the paperwork we've received, I think everything has been settled, everyone has signed off on the plans for the in-ground swimming pool at 680 Barrymore, and all we have to do tonight is pass the resolution. Is anybody in disagreement with that statement and would like to ask any questions of Mr. Stein or the consultants?
No.
We have somebody jumping in with a chat. All right, okay. One of the neighbors of the applicant is supporting the application. Okay, great, we got that. Okay. We have a draft resolution before us, and we know that some dates changed, and so I know Teresa is aware of the date change, because we did get a revised set of plans dated the 9th. And I think that got changed, but other than that, I don't think there was anything wrong with it. I have no comments on the resolution. Does anybody else have any comments on the resolution?
No.
No, no, no. Okay. So I need a motion to approve the resolution to allow the construction of the swimming pool at 680 Barrymore Lane.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Cindy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. We need to promote, I guess, Michael Stein for both Barrymore and Bayhead. We'll start with, we'll start with Barrymore. Tonight, I believe we're just passing the resolutions, so we shouldn't have much to discuss.
Good evening. Thank you again tremendously for switching things around a little.
No problem. I think, and Susan and Esteban can certainly jump in, but with all the paperwork we've received, I think everything has been settled, everyone has signed off on the plans for the in-ground swimming pool at 680 Barrymore, and all we have to do tonight is pass the resolution. Is anybody in disagreement with that statement and would like to ask any questions of Mr. Stein or the consultants?
No.
We have somebody jumping in with a chat. All right, okay. One of the neighbors of the applicant is supporting the application. Okay, great, we got that. Okay. We have a draft resolution before us, and we know that some dates changed, and so I know Teresa is aware of the date change, because we did get a revised set of plans dated the 9th. And I think that got changed, but other than that, I don't think there was anything wrong with it. I have no comments on the resolution. Does anybody else have any comments on the resolution?
No.
No, no, no. Okay. So I need a motion to approve the resolution to allow the construction of the swimming pool at 680 Barrymore Lane.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Cindy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Enjoy. Michael, stay where you are. Now we have Barrymore Lane. Okay, Bayhead Drive, BBA words. Okay. Same thing, we had a draft resolution, the dates changed, we were getting final plans today to correct some minor issues. Everybody has signed off on it, and we're ready to approve the latest draft of the resolution. Is that everybody's understanding? Anybody have any other issues with that? No? Okay. I need a motion to move the resolution here.
So moved.
Second.
I know you want to jump in, Richard.
No, no, no. I've done my share.
I know. We missed, the last, last meeting, we missed who moved and who seconded. Cindy and John, who else? Okay.
It's the default team.
Okay. Let's vote, John?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
I'll see you in a couple of weeks for a couple more pools.
Right. We'll sub special.
Pools, yeah, pools are us. Okay. That brings us to a request from the 650 Van Rans Place people. Who, Amber, are you presenting this to us?
Let me just see if the applicant is on.
We approved a new single-family house last May. Because of the pandemic, I believe they haven't been able to start construction, they're asking for an extension. Seems to be something that we're going to be seeing more and more of. This is our second extension in.
Right. I do not see the applicant on. It's possible they anticipated coming later.
Yeah, well, I don't think, I mean, is there anything anybody needs to know about this? I mean, Amber, can, you know, you've been in discussion with them, did I sort of sum this up correctly?
Yes, and the applicant just sent a document a short, a short time ago, just, just explaining a little bit further why they're requesting the extension in anticipation that they might not actually be available online tonight. I think they're applying to call in, in the car, and it's really, so I can just pull that up if that's, if.
Yeah, that's fine.
If that works for everybody. So hold on just a moment, please. And so really, this is just an extension request, because they have not yet obtained the building permit, and they, you know, need to file. And they want to make sure they filed for the extension request before the approval from the board expires, so that they have that when they go to pull the permit from the building department.
So, so how long is the extension for? I don't know how often, how long these things are generally granted for?
So, so the draft resolution that we have on file, which was voted on May a year ago, doesn't have a hard deadline for the extension request. It appears to be, you know, for May, so they wanted to make sure that they submitted this extension request in advance of that.
Yeah, so, so the regulations provide that they expire in a year if they don't pull the building permit. So generally, it leaves it up to the planning board how much of an extension you want to grant, but I think in the last case, we granted a year, year extension.
Yeah, I think so too. Yeah, it seems to be my memory. Well, we have extraordinary circumstances now with the pandemic.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Richard, did you have something to say?
No, just that one year is a reasonable time, and we should, we should incorporate that into the resume.
Frank or Dennis, do you have any, any objection to us granting an extension for this application?
I don't, no.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So I guess we need a motion. Teresa, yeah, here. Do we? Second. Okay. This is to grant an extension to the owners of 650 Van Rans Place, a one-year extension for construction, to getting a building permit for construction, a new single-family house. Okay. Let's vote. John?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. We need to approve minutes from February 24th meeting, and then we are going to take the site plan review applications for 680 Barrymore and 1069 Bayhead, because the applicant's representative is cheating on us tonight and going to another land use municipality board, another municipality board meeting right after this. Then we are going to take administrative action 5A Van Rans Place, because it's fast and easy, and then we are going to come back to the agenda and have a discussion about 1258 East Boston Post Road, and another one about 131 High Street. Okay? Everybody keep up with those stages? Okay. We have before us draft minutes assembled by the wonderful minute person, Barbara Ritter, for review and comment. Anybody have any comments at all on these minutes? No, I know, I don't have any either.
They were good, they were good.
Very good, very good. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Okay. Ellen?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. We need to approve minutes from February 24th meeting, and then we are going to take the site plan review applications for 680 Barrymore and 1069 Bayhead, because the applicant's representative is cheating on us tonight and going to another land use municipality board, another municipality board meeting right after this. Then we are going to take administrative action 5A Van Rans Place, because it's fast and easy, and then we are going to come back to the agenda and have a discussion about 1258 East Boston Post Road, and another one about 131 High Street. Okay? Everybody keep up with those stages? Okay. We have before us draft minutes assembled by the wonderful minute person, Barbara Ritter, for review and comment. Anybody have any comments at all on these minutes? No, I know, I don't have any either.
They were good, they were good.
Very good, very good. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Okay. Ellen?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. We need to approve minutes from February 24th meeting, and then we are going to take the site plan review applications for 680 Barrymore and 1069 Bayhead, because the applicant's representative is cheating on us tonight and going to another land use municipality board, another municipality board meeting right after this. Then we are going to take administrative action 5A Van Rans Place, because it's fast and easy, and then we are going to come back to the agenda and have a discussion about 1258 East Boston Post Road, and another one about 131 High Street. Okay? Everybody keep up with those stages? Okay. We have before us draft minutes assembled by the wonderful minute person, Barbara Ritter, for review and comment. Anybody have any comments at all on these minutes? No, I know, I don't have any either.
They were good, they were good.
Very good, very good. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Okay. Ellen?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. We need to approve minutes from February 24th meeting, and then we are going to take the site plan review applications for 680 Barrymore and 1069 Bayhead, because the applicant's representative is cheating on us tonight and going to another land use municipality board, another municipality board meeting right after this. Then we are going to take administrative action 5A Van Rans Place, because it's fast and easy, and then we are going to come back to the agenda and have a discussion about 1258 East Boston Post Road, and another one about 131 High Street. Okay? Everybody keep up with those stages? Okay. We have before us draft minutes assembled by the wonderful minute person, Barbara Ritter, for review and comment. Anybody have any comments at all on these minutes? No, I know, I don't have any either.
They were good, they were good.
Very good, very good. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Okay. Ellen?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. We need to approve minutes from February 24th meeting, and then we are going to take the site plan review applications for 680 Barrymore and 1069 Bayhead, because the applicant's representative is cheating on us tonight and going to another land use municipality board, another municipality board meeting right after this. Then we are going to take administrative action 5A Van Rans Place, because it's fast and easy, and then we are going to come back to the agenda and have a discussion about 1258 East Boston Post Road, and another one about 131 High Street. Okay? Everybody keep up with those stages? Okay. We have before us draft minutes assembled by the wonderful minute person, Barbara Ritter, for review and comment. Anybody have any comments at all on these minutes? No, I know, I don't have any either.
They were good, they were good.
Very good, very good. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Okay. Ellen?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. We need to approve minutes from February 24th meeting, and then we are going to take the site plan review applications for 680 Barrymore and 1069 Bayhead, because the applicant's representative is cheating on us tonight and going to another land use municipality board, another municipality board meeting right after this. Then we are going to take administrative action 5A Van Rans Place, because it's fast and easy, and then we are going to come back to the agenda and have a discussion about 1258 East Boston Post Road, and another one about 131 High Street. Okay? Everybody keep up with those stages? Okay. We have before us draft minutes assembled by the wonderful minute person, Barbara Ritter, for review and comment. Anybody have any comments at all on these minutes? No, I know, I don't have any either.
They were good, they were good.
Very good, very good. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Okay. Ellen?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. We need to approve minutes from February 24th meeting, and then we are going to take the site plan review applications for 680 Barrymore and 1069 Bayhead, because the applicant's representative is cheating on us tonight and going to another land use municipality board, another municipality board meeting right after this. Then we are going to take administrative action 5A Van Rans Place, because it's fast and easy, and then we are going to come back to the agenda and have a discussion about 1258 East Boston Post Road, and another one about 131 High Street. Okay? Everybody keep up with those stages? Okay. We have before us draft minutes assembled by the wonderful minute person, Barbara Ritter, for review and comment. Anybody have any comments at all on these minutes? No, I know, I don't have any either.
They were good, they were good.
Very good, very good. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Okay. Ellen?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. We need to approve minutes from February 24th meeting, and then we are going to take the site plan review applications for 680 Barrymore and 1069 Bayhead, because the applicant's representative is cheating on us tonight and going to another land use municipality board, another municipality board meeting right after this. Then we are going to take administrative action 5A Van Rans Place, because it's fast and easy, and then we are going to come back to the agenda and have a discussion about 1258 East Boston Post Road, and another one about 131 High Street. Okay? Everybody keep up with those stages? Okay. We have before us draft minutes assembled by the wonderful minute person, Barbara Ritter, for review and comment. Anybody have any comments at all on these minutes? No, I know, I don't have any either.
They were good, they were good.
Very good, very good. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Good, have a good written.
I know you want to jump in, Richard.
No, no, no. Sorry. I've done my share.
I know. We missed, the last, last meeting, we, we missed who, who moved and who seconded. Cindy and John, who else? Okay.
It's the default, default team.
Okay. Let's vote, John?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. We need to approve minutes from February 24th meeting, and then we are going to take the site plan review applications for 680 Barrymore and 1069 Bayhead, because the applicant's representative is cheating on us tonight and going to another land use municipality board, another municipality board meeting right after this. Then we are going to take administrative action 5A Van Rans Place, because it's fast and easy, and then we are going to come back to the agenda and have a discussion about 1258 East Boston Post Road, and another one about 131 High Street. Okay? Everybody keep up with those stages? Okay. We have before us draft minutes assembled by the wonderful minute person, Barbara Ritter, for review and comment. Anybody have any comments at all on these minutes? No, I know, I don't have any either.
They were good, they were good.
Very good, very good. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Cindy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Enjoy. Michael, stay where you are. Now we have Barrymore Lane. Okay, Bayhead Drive, BBA words. Okay. Same thing, we had a draft resolution, the dates changed, we were getting final plans today to correct some minor issues. Everybody has signed off on it, and we're ready to approve the latest draft of the resolution. Is that everybody's understanding? Anybody have any other issues with that? No? Okay. I need a motion to move the resolution here.
So moved.
Second.
You guys have a good written.
I know you want to jump in, Richard.
No, no, no. Sorry. I've done my share.
I know. We missed, the last, last meeting, we, we missed who, who moved and who seconded. Cindy and John, who else? Okay.
It's the default, default team.
Okay. Let's vote, John?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
I'll see you in a couple of weeks for a couple more pools.
We'll sub special.
Pools, yeah, pools are us. Okay. That brings us to a request from the 650 Van Rans Place people. Who, Amber, are you presenting this to us?
Let me just see if the applicant is on.
We approved a new single-family house last May. Because of the pandemic, I believe they haven't been able to start construction, they're asking for an extension. Seems to be something that we're going to be seeing more and more of. This is our second extension in.
Right. I do not see the applicant on. It's possible they, they anticipated coming later.
Yeah, well, I don't think, I mean, is there anything anybody needs to know about this? I mean, Amber, can, you know, you've been in discussion with them, did I sort of sum this up correctly?
Yes, and, and the applicant just sent a, a document a short, a short time ago, just, just explaining a little bit further why they're requesting the extension in anticipation that they might not actually be available online tonight. I think they're applying to call in, in the car, and it's, it's really, so I can just pull that up if that's, if.
Yeah, that's fine.
If that works for everybody. So hold on just a moment, please. And so really, this is just an extension request, because they have not yet obtained the building permit, and they, you know, need to file. And they, they want to make sure they filed for the extension request before the approval from the board expires, so that they have that when they go to pull the permit from
Good evening, Chairman Zavol and members of the planning board, as well as your professional consultants. For the record, my name is Jonathan Kraut from the law firm of Harfness Kraut and Pearlstein, on behalf of the applicant. Joining me is Rex Gedney from Crozier Gedney Architects, our project architect. My colleague Leo Napier from my firm. And Alan Pilch, I believe, is on via audio, he's our professional engineer. Can I just confirm, Alan? Oh, there you are, Alan.
I'm here.
There, you just popped up in the corner of my screen. Our request is simple, I think the chair adequately set forth the purpose of our application. We did provide you with an executive summary. You're all well familiar with the Toyota City property. This evening's request is, is pretty narrow. It is simply that the planning board declares intent to act as lead agency, as you would always do with this type of application, and indicate that it is in unlisted action, which I think there's no question that it is. And then make your required referral to the H C Z M C for review. We have had the opportunity to receive Keller Sessions' comment memorandum from Esteban Garcia, the professional engineer, as well as the board's consultant concerning landscaping. And we are reviewing them and will be modifying plans to include the notes and answer the questions that are set forth in their memos. It, it certainly would be a waste of time to try to weed through them extemporaneously, one at a time. My suggestion to the chair and the board would be, if there's any specific question that you have in order to make a determination about lead agency, the typing of the action, or as to whether or not it requires referral, we can answer those or any other questions that you might have.
Thanks. We have reviewed your, your submission. And we can probably type per secret tonight. We also have some questions and perhaps, and I'm going to ask some of our consultants to jump in here. In order to make the rest of the process go a little bit more smoother, we think that there's some more information that can be submitted before you go to H C Z M. Because we are looking for, you are looking for a wetlands permit, you're going to be within a hundred foot buffer from the water course that flows down behind and to the side of the property. So I guess maybe, Stephen, can you sort of, Stephen is our consulting, consulting planner from A K O R. Who, who has reviewed this? You want to jump in here?
Sure. So just a couple of clarifications that I had wanted to ask is, the plans that you sent in showed a one hundred foot buffer from a water course. But then the table of impacts was discussing wetland buffer impacts. There's no clear description in the code that I could see that regulates a hundred foot buffer from a water course. There is the one hundred foot wetland buffer adjacent area regulation. But it's just not clear whether this is actually classified as a wetland or if it's a water course. There is a regulation in the code two forty dash thirty that regulates a fifty foot buffer from water courses that drain into Long Island Sound. So that would maybe apply, but we just thought it would be helpful to get some clarification and perhaps have a wetland scientist sort of delineate the wet, the wetland, if there is a wetland delineation there. So, and then also to, to confirm whether or not there's a floodplain associated with that water course that would affect the project site.
So I'm going to defer momentarily to Alan Pilch, our professional engineer, who also does have a wetland scientist in his office group. I would note for the entire board that the plans is proposed actually decrease existing impervious surfaces in the wetland buffer, I believe, by order of magnitude somewhere between six hundred and fifty and seven hundred square feet. With regard to the code and water course versus wetland, certainly we can provide further information with regard to any comments on the code. And then I would just pitch the baton to you, Alan, for any comments concerning that, as well as any potential floodplain issues based upon topography.
With regard to the, yes, so as Jonathan said, yes, we'll take a look at the the conditions of the water course to see whether or not there is an associated wetland, you know, I would say flanking it. But, you know, there's some water course is completely contained within a stone masonry retaining wall. There may be some fringes of wetland within that bound of what's, you know, contained within that retaining wall. Looking at the property, I don't think on the property to the, call it the, the left side of it, there would be any wetlands associated there. We'll have a, you know, we'll have a wetland scientist take a look at that to determine that. With regard to floodplain, I'll take a look at that. I, I don't have that information right in front of me, but we'll provide that information for this purpose. And I guess we'll just have to get back to you on this one.
Okay, thank you. And I, I would just recommend that you are consistent with the terminology because it, like I said, the plan showed a one hundred foot buffer from a water course, but then it was discussing impacts to a wetland buffer. So I would just make that consistent. And, you know, the, if there is no wetland, and then there would be no wetland buffer, I suppose so.
Yeah, I think, and I think Stephen, that, that is a good point, we'll take a look at it. And oftentimes, water courses in those circumstances have no associated fringe wetlands. I would also note that there are some water quality improvements that are proposed, which in a hardline channel, obviously, where you have this much associated or surrounding impervious i- is a feature that I think would improve water quality, which obviously down the line we can get into. The, the one thing I would ask the board and the chair to consider is continuing with our requested referral. Because I think the information that's being asked for both can be provided simultaneously to the H C Z M and as well as to your board. And I don't, unless someone on the board thinks that there may not then be a requirement for a referral, I think the referral has to happen anyway.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kraut. Does anybody on the planning board have any questions or issues with anything we've heard so far? I know Cindy, you've been looking like you're ready to talk.
Well, I, I have two questions. One is, so the water course with or without attendant wetlands, where does that flow from and where does it flow to?
I know.
Water course itself? This is Beaver Swamp Brook, which is.
Beaver Swamp Brook. So it does flow eventually into Long Island Sound?
Oh, yes, yes, it's a center of the water course.
Goes into Dryon Creek.
I'll, I'll just say, I'm just looking right now at what mapping Westchester County. And it does show that there's, and it also maps the floodplain on mapping Westchester County. I'll take a look at the FEMA mapping, but it shows it off this property. And, and on the adjacent property, I'll say to the west.
Okay.
Associated with blind, associated with Beaver Swamp Brook, but we'll confirm that.
I, I'd also be interested in knowing about the flooding in the area. I, you know, it's, it's a hard channel, but if there is a lot of water flowing that direction, I'm assuming it's going to overbank?
It does overbank, maybe not right there, but it does, it does flood in heavy storms, very heavy storms. Starting in Harrison, up, upstream from us, there's some flooding and then through the neighborhood, it's, as it snakes through the neighborhood, they experience flooding under, under certain circumstances. I can't tell you the details, but they do.
So I, I guess I'm interested in also, since this has been used for vehicle storage for a long time, is there any soil testing that you're doing?
We will be doing soil testing as requested by Keller Sessions. We have not done that yet, but we will be doing that.
Okay, and I would also think that we, I'm sorry.
Just to also point out that the, the plan we did submit does propose a stormwater management facility, which would provide peak rate attenuation for all storms up to the one hundred year storm, as designed. So.
Okay, so that's for flooding, what about water quality? Are you requiring quality?
Yeah.
Okay.
What we will do is, we'll do, we'll perform the soil testing and we'll, you know, we'll provide that information. I mean, it is a subsurface chamber which does infiltrate into the ground, you know, into the soils, which does provide a, a water quality benefit, but what we'll do is we'll provide soil testing to examine the soils and see what type of benefit it might provide through how much percolation infiltration there is.
Well, I'm also concerned about any detriment, because if the soil is, has a considerable amount of oil or gas or residue or chemicals, we don't really want to be spreading that back into Beaver Swamp Brook and out into Long Island Sound.
Understood.
And the other thing is, maybe we could ask Ms. Oakley to, you know, maybe, you know, work, work on the landscaping in terms of maybe putting some appropriate planting materials, you know, along the, the, the water course, although it's a hard scape, but perhaps there's something that can be done over there.
There's, on the left side of the property, there already is a plant, planting bed. But we, we can work together and talk about it to create a little more protection between what is infiltrating into the ground between that and the creek.
And, and so that between, where I see all the trees and, and plantings, between that and the water course, what's going to be there? Is that mowed lawn or?
Remnant, it says remains of asphalt pavement on, on the that could be the current.
Is that on the property?
Yeah.
Looking at, see.
Actually. She can clarify that, it's actually off the properties, on the property to the west.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so the, so the plantings delineate the property line?
Yes, the property line is nearly to the west of that line.
Okay.
All right, you, so you don't control that property?
That is correct.
Okay. It's good to know. This is a lot of asphalt going on there. It's mostly turf now, right? Grass with a little, with a little bit of asphalt.
As I said, there's a decrease in the impervious surfaces in, in the locations that we indicated. Alan, I don't know if you want to give further quantitative takeoffs on any of that.
Well, we, under the existing condition, I'll say within the call it one hundred foot from the water course, I'll leave it at that. We calculated twenty nine hundred and two square feet of impervious surfaces that we will, and in the future condition with the landscaping area and removal of some of that pavement that's there, we're actually going to be decreasing it by about six hundred seventy one square feet. So it's, it's a decent amount.
But that's just within the buffer, right? That it's being decreased on the entire property, it's actually being increased.
Increased.
Yeah.
But we know, we normally.
A lot of it, a lot of it, I understand, it's an old parking area. So you have, some of it's asphalt and the rest of it is like broken up asphalt. You know, that's, that's kind of like what the surface is. So it's not like it's pristine at all.
No, I, I, I understand. I guess what we normally see is existing conditions, total impervious surface, and then we see, after you have done your improvements, what the net change is, more or less the same.
For the total, for the total site.
Sure, and we could take a closer look and give you any particulars on that, but I think to Alan's point, for those of us who've walked the site, the areas of broken asphalt, I think, under, under almost any circumstance, planning boards would view them as impervious, even where you have weeds and other material breaking them up and growing through them. But we can give you numbers on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think.
And in a lot of respects, environmentally, for the purposes of water quality, having the restored areas of asphalt rather than broken, where you do have leaching in those areas, you'd have the water properly corrected, collected, directed, retained and, and cleaned. Really, the end, the end result of this project, and as we move down the line with you, we can go through the details, will be improved water quality.
That's the point.
Yep, and I think that's a, that's a point well made.
Teresa, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think that the buffer calculation that you have on your T one hundred drawing is really doing you a disservice because it has proposed impervious surface within wetlands buffer of two thousand two hundred and thirty one square feet. And I think a table instead showing the overall statistics would be really helpful. And the amount that you're reducing the, the, the impervious surface within the buffer would also be a good thing. I think that was kind of Stephen's point. The Harbor Commission is going to want to see those numbers. And they'll want to really have the wetland delineation, to the extent there is a wetland, done, so they can look at that, because that's part of what they look at as well.
That, that's an excellent point, and we will update our submission with a table that pulls, pulls those numbers together in one place. It makes it very clear, so thank you.
Okay. Anybody have anything else they, they feel the applicant should do before or simultaneously to them submitting to H C Z M?
I think I do have one more question, if that's okay, Kathy.
Go right ahead.
All right, Ellen, what's the size of the building that you're building here? Is it seven hundred and fifty square feet or something?
I think Rex Gedney, our project architect, probably answered that the quickest.
Yes, that is correct, seven hundred and fifty.
Okay, and that's the only building that you're proposed, that's the only structure you're proposing on the property?
That is correct.
Okay.
That, that, that's meaningful.
It is.
Know this, that's meaningful for SECR. Okay, our, our.
Jump in one more time?
Who's that?
Steven, sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
I was just going to say, is there any reason that you wouldn't want to take this as a, as a type two action? Given the square footage of the building, unless you you don't have concerns about the potential environmental considerations? I don't know, Teresa, if you have any thoughts on that or?
Yeah, I think with the, with the, with the SECR regulations, we're pretty much constrained to consider it a type two action based on the regulations which say, construction or expansion of a primary or accessory pertinent non-residential structure or facility involving less than four thousand square feet of gross floor area and not involving a change in zoning or use variance and consistent with local land use controls. So I believe you fall under that category, which is type two or exempt, unless you're also building a radio communication or microwave transmission facility, which I don't see on your plans.
Now, this application also has to go to zoning board, correct? Is it for a use variance or anything that you just said? No, okay. Okay, so, so, and no, we, we're not adverse to typing this type two, if that's what the law allows. But unless anybody wants to say anything, but before I, before I continue, I just want to, we have some neighbors watching. I just want to assure the neighbors and anybody else who's watching, this is the beginning of the process for this project. We are having an informal discussion right now about different aspects of it. There will be review by the Harbor and Coastal Zone Management. There will be, this application will also be for, be before the zoning board. And they will be back at the planning board for a site plan review. So there'll be ample opportunity to learn more about the project. All the documents that we're referring to this evening are posted on the village website. You can look at it, all the plans and read all of the narrative. But this is the beginning, not the end of the process. So I hope that allays some of the concerns that the neighbors have. There will be an opportunity as we go forward for comments from interested parties. So I just want to, we had somebody pop up in the chat room asking, you know, that, saying they don't know much about this, but there's, you can, I mean, you can go online and just download documents and look at them between now and when they go to the next land use board and follow along by looking at the agenda of when the application is going to appear on the agenda for the different boards. Okay?
Yeah, and just, just to be clear, Kathy, I think it, it's a special permit they're going to the Z B A for.
Special permit, thank you, I forgot what it was.
That's correct.
I, I have my little cheat sheet here, but it, it didn't say it on it. So it just said you had to go, you can say for what. Okay, um, all right.
I'm sorry, I have one more question about, about the type two. I, I, you know, I see that, that's obviously what the code is saying. In, in the unusual events that the soil is found to have a lot of contamination in it, does that preclude further remediation or examination?
Oh, no, not at all. Not at all, not at all. It's, even though it's a type two action under SECR, you certainly have more than enough authority under the zoning code to look at contamination of that type.
Okay.
I have one more question as well. Since, since the application states that the zoning board previously denied a use variance, and so use of vehicle storage ceased, does that mean, you know, that this facility is not being replaced in kind? It's a different use, does that affect the SECR determination or should it?
No, it, it would not affect the definition that there is here in the regs. They're going to go to the Z B A for a special permit. So the Z B A will make the decision under the zoning whether or not to grant the special permit. But there, it's my understanding that they're not seeking a use variance. But there, it's my understanding that they're not seeking a use variance of any kind.
That is correct. That is correct.
So a special permit would be just for hours of operation or that type of thing, right?
It would. It would be because the use is listed under Article ten as requiring a special permit.
But not a zone change, but what the considerations for the special permit are like hours of operation or or lighting or something.
They're more health and welfare. They don't have the standards like for a use variance or an area variance. It's very different.
Right.
Correct, John.
Okay. So I think we could type this tonight then. And as far as making sure that before you appear before HCM, I think some of the suggestions and some of the requests that planning board and our consultants we've made tonight would certainly help you with your initial appearance before HCM. I'm sorry, chat chats are popping up, which I wish they wouldn't while we're talking. So, okay, so is everyone okay when motion to type this then for secret under secret as type two based on the paragraph that Teresa just read?
Yep.
Is that is that a yes? You you moved the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, John.
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Now, before we we let them go, I think I think we gave you some good hints today that we want you to make some revisions before Amber puts you on an agenda for HCM. I think that will just do nothing but help you. Do you have any questions for us? Or does anybody else have any questions for any of the applicants representatives?
Speaking for the applicant, we don't have any questions. We thank you for your review and comments, and we will, as appropriate, reach out to your professional staff to cover any points raised this evening or raised in their comment memos to make sure we're as responsive as we can be.
Okay. Right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You too.
Okay.
Okay. That brings us to an application, a new application for site plan review for a single family house at one thirty one Hyview Street. Before we do anything else, I just have to explain for anybody who follows along carefully, why is the planning board reviewing a single family home, a site plan review for a single family home? Well, there's two reasons. One, the the building of this home involves clearing of vegetation or moving earth on a property that's just a little bit more than half an acre. That would bring it into our purview. But also there was a an action before the zoning board and a resolution was adopted in October of two thousand twenty that stated that the site plan was for this application was required. And therefore, here we are. This also now is the beginning of a process. It is not the end. It's just the beginning. We do have some comments from a neighbor that we can talk a little bit about, but we are just received this application. We're just starting it. There are some gaps and some information needed in this application, which we are working on. This by no means the end of the process. It's the beginning. Okay, so we have with us today for the applicant, is that Mr. Bernstein? Would you like to present the project to the board? You have to unmute yourself.
Hello, how are you doing today?
Hi.
Okay, so we are, we prepared an application for a single family home at one thirty one Hyview Street. The approximate lot area is about point five of an acre, which is about twenty three thousand five hundred forty eight square feet. We're going to be using about point nine of the required FTR to build a single family house for my client. And we're currently going to use about thirty three point nine percent of the required lot coverage for the immediate development and for the surrounds. Basically, we're going to have an approach from Hyview Street and a hundred fifty foot driveway is mostly due to the existing site constraints constraints there on the site.
Do you want to share your screen? Do you want to put plans up on the screen and share that with us as you speak? We can allow that to happen.
I don't have.
Okay, if you can't do it, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't have that right now.
Okay, keep going.
So basically, with that, we are going to basically removing, hence why we're here, planning board review, about seven hundred twenty nine cubic yards of soil movement. We received the comments from the engineer that was part of the package in order, we just recently received them from the town engineer. We're currently reviewing them, and we're going to answer all those objections that were answered. Pretty much, right now, it's a flat lot. We're kind of keeping to the existing characteristics of the neighborhood. Most of that neighborhood around Hyview Street has extended driveways. So literally, we kind of just want to hear the board's response to the development of the site and kind of proceed accordingly. I know this is kind of like an initial discussion meeting before everything. We're probably going to have two more meetings after this roughly. So I'm kind of leaving it up to questions and comments. This time.
Okay, I I found. I'm sorry.
I don't know if everybody got a chance to review the plans and everything.
Well, yeah, we we got them last week. I found some of the things a little difficult to to read, especially we were looking for the narrative swift and instead, and I'm sure Esteban has a lot of comments for you on that, so I'm not even going to get into it. But does any does anyone on the board have any questions at this point in time? And, you know, I don't I I don't know if I'm missing some receipt on this. Maybe someone can, one of our consultant can tell us. Is this the only board that this application has to go to? Or do they also have to go to HCM?
Oh, we gotta go to the architectural board too.
You have to go to the architecture board. Is that the only one, I think?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay, okay. So this is the beginning of our analysis or review. Does anybody have any questions?
So Kathy, a interesting diagram regarding the cars in the driveway, and it seems like the driveway is the big issue here. Is there a lot of cut and fill to to make this driveway happen?
There's not be a lot of fill, but there's going to be a lot of cut. Right now, we got the comments for the review engineer. They're asking for soil percolation test, which we're going to perform, and the soil bearing. Most of that, the reason that it sat vacant for so long is because most of that sits on bedrock. So literally, within about four feet, we've been encountering in the back. We prepared an application previously for some of the site removal. During that period of time, my client, who is a contractor, started chipping away some of the rock and realized that it's very systemic throughout the whole entire lot. He's still interested in doing everything, but obviously, we have to start doing the the percolation test and kind of examining more of the lot in order to make this work. So right now, currently, the driveway is as designed as about sixty feet wide. My client really wanted two cars to go up there because he he has a lot of family. He's Albanian, so like literally family visits all the time, especially around holidays, stuff like that. So he wanted two cars that go perpendicular down the driveway, which we didn't feel like was a problem because we have the lock, the lock coverage currently, and everything is in compliance as per the town ordinance.
So so because of the rock and the fact that you don't know, you know, how much rock you have and where it is, you don't know what, how you're going to handle your stormwater. Do you do you have a plan for the stormwater or that hasn't?
Yes. I'm sorry that I could, next time I come prepared with sharing the screens and everything like that, I thought it was going to be like somebody narrated. This is our first time through. So I'm kind of, I'm kind of getting used to the way Village of the Mariner works. But if you, give me one second.
Which plan number is it? Is A one oh four?
No, it would be C. C one oh three. That shows currently where we base everything on a three inch rainfall, maximum twenty five year storm. I know that the review engineer had comments about making a hundred year storm. We're going to introduce that accordingly. Right now, we have seven, yeah, a total of seven thousand gallon drywalls that we're going to push through the property. And obviously, we're going to have to do the excavation accordingly.
There's your plan.
There we go.
How far down did you discover rock? Because I'm a little worried now that you won't be able to fulfill the infiltration requirement, separation requirement for the state disaster stormwater design manual.
Okay, I mean, we're going to look at the, but pretty much where you see the majority of like right at the beginning of the apron of the driveway, that's where my client's been doing some of the chipping away, pretty much as soon as the 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 grant or the bedrock literally sits right on the soil at that point in the location.
Well, that could be a problem.
Yeah, especially since the site is so steep.
Right.
I I mean, you're up, you know, obviously, you're up on a hill and water flows downhill. So I would think there needs to be, you know, really good calculations.
As overflow method, we do, we do have a trench drain at the beginning of the driveway, right along Hyview Street. That's going to be as our outflow over controlled. So nothing drains on the highway. We're not planning on anything draining out to Hyview Street. But obviously, we got some more development to do based on the engineer's comments.
Right. Okay, so it's it sounds like we, this is going to be really a very intense engineering review and going back and forth between you and our engineering consultant, Keller Sessions, to to make sure that this is this is doable. I mean, it is a very steep site and with a lot of rock.
Yeah, the high point from like the drive from Hyview Street to the driveway is around roughly about twenty feet.
Twenty feet.
Vertical incline.
Yeah.
But we're going to do vegetative swells and stuff like that. We get, we just recently, as of today, got the engineer comments, which was posted.
Well, this is the beginning of the process, as we said, you know, and we'll work through it with you, you know. We'll we'll do what's necessary. And we'll look at the vegetative swells. We have a landscape consultant who can work with you on things like that. So this is just really the beginning. We're just opening up the process. And we'll we'll see how this will work.
So so you're planning on having a basement with this house?
Cellar.
Okay.
Yeah, pretty much. We're going to try to, we're trying to minimize the amount of cut that we do. So we're going to nest into the existing landscape as much as soon as possible. Basically, the only part that's really facing the front, which is really open, is the front of the house. Besides that, everything is under grade for the rest of it.
And and I would assume that you're not doing a lot of rock removal. You're just testing to see where you get resistance, where the where the rock is.
At this current time, yeah, but obviously, I mean, Frank knows more. Frank, you're on the call?
Yes, Sam.
Yeah, Frank Frank knows what's going on. Basically, my client, he was in touch with Frank back and forth, back and forth, pretty much. He's been chipping as per he was allowed without any excavation equipment. But once he gets the approval and gets the excavation equipment, there'd be a lot easier process. He's having, he's having no problem really moving the rock. He's been moving it back and forth, back and forth, and start piling it. So the rock is able to be removed. It's just a question of him doing it at this point.
He's not currently doing, he's not currently removing.
No, 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 we stopped.
This right, right. That's what I thought. Right, right. Okay, okay.
Kathy?
Yes.
I made a site visit to get a better understanding of the tree coverage, and I would encourage the planning board members to do the same because you get a very different feel for the piece of property when you see it.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's a good, that's a good suggestion. If we want to go as a group, we have to notice it as an official meeting, which we've done in the past. Or we can go in twos or by ourselves, but no majority of us can go if we wanted to arrange something with the contractor or with Mr. Bernstein to go and tour with them. We can arrange it as a meeting, so we'll we'll.
We're going to answer pretty much most of the objections that was issued by the town engineer.
Don't wear street shoes. Wear.
Hiking boots?
Yeah, maybe. Make sure you have the hiking boots on.
That alone says it all.
All right. Okay, that's a, that's a good suggestion. Maybe maybe we'll put together a little field trip.
Yeah, we'll make sure, we'll make sure all the hiking boots are right along Hyview Street, so everybody has.
I actually own two pairs of hiking boots. I can lend a pair out. All right. Okay, does anybody have any questions? I mean, this looks like we have a ways to go before we can even ask any any more questions at this point in time. We can type this. This is a type two action, correct? Because it's a single family home.
Yep.
So we can do that tonight. Is there anything else that we need to do tonight? We got sort of the the work started, what needs to get done with the consultants looking at things. But anything else that we have to do? Steven, Teresa?
No, no, we're fine. We're fine.
Okay, so we can type this then under secret as a type two action because it's a single family home and on the list. So if everybody's in agreement to proceed in that way, I need a motion then to type this as type two.
Go move.
Thank you. Okay, Richard?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Before we stop, though, with this particular thing, we did receive some comments from a neighbor. And I just want to just review them. And, you know, I'm asking my, oh, we, yeah. I'm asking people to jump in as as needed. Three page letter with with exhibits delineating some of her concerns. Then the notice provision of the in the village code for tonight's meeting, the applicant doesn't feel that it was done correctly. The applicant did file an affidavit with the planning department, saying that they they did the notice and sent the notice to the neighbors. However, it wasn't received ten days prior, but the affidavit stated it was mailed appropriately, so it could have been received ten days prior. We cannot hold anybody responsible for what's going on with the post office right now, except Mr. DeJoy. And as far as there was nothing attached to it, I I'm hoping that this resident realizes that everything is now available on the website, that we're at the beginning of the process and there's ample time for everyone who's interested to review the record. The code does allow us to begin this process and for the applicant to make the notification right, which means you would have to mail all the papers, the application to the neighbors. But I'm hoping that with, in this day and age, with electronic submissions and nobody really using paper anymore, that that's not necessarily, and everything is on the website.
Do you want me to email those people?
No, we'll hear from the residents if they don't agree with me. Okay, so the next thing was in in the letter was a whole bunch of references to code about existing and proposed site plans and not meeting the requirements. I'm going to ask the staff to check that paragraph, please. Let us know. The stormwater management plan. We we understand. We, we understand that that's a, an issue and our consulting engineer is working on it. SEACRA is a type two exempt action, so I'm not going to worry about that. Some questions about how can we begin our, how can we do our review if we don't have the information? I just explained that. We're at the beginning, not the end, and we'll work on that. Then there's a, an issue about how there's an easement and a deed restriction filed on this property and there's been no information submitted to us with regards to that. So if that's accurate, we do need information on the application with regards to.
I, I have a certified copy of an order discharging that easement from Westchester County.
Oh, okay.
Number. And it's, it was dated, I don't have the date in front of me, but
Okay.
It has been discharged.
Okay, so there is no easement and, and no deed restriction. Okay, thank you.
Can, can we get that up on the website? I think that would be really good information.
Yeah, if you can get it, if you can get it to Amber so she can be scanned and posted, that would be great.
Yeah, I can.
Okay. The application was not filled out correctly. I agree with the applicant. There was info, and there was a question on whether you've been, this application has been before any board. We know it was before the zoning board. We have the resolution. We have the information, so we've taken care of that. According to the neighbor, there is some stormwater runoff on her property now because there was vegetation removed and then work stopped. Obviously, this application will deal with that, but unless work, work is commenced at this point in time, which no one wants you to do, we can't do much about that. And then there was.
I don't know, excuse me, Kathy, is there, is there, I mean, if, if there's runoff and there's damage?
Put up silt fencing and hay bales.
Hay bales, right. Would, would that be allowed, Frank, even though work has stopped otherwise? I mean, to stop, slow down some of the runoff?
Of course, you can always put up silt fence and hay bales, but you know, I think you'll see what the conditions are when you do your site visit as far as runoff on the neighbor's property.
Okay, well, during this interim time, if we can, I think, be sensitive to the neighbors, that'll help the applicant as well. And a few hay bales and a silt fence wouldn't be too expensive. And it should be obvious where the runoff is, so, so maybe some education there.
I'll get my clients to go jump on that right away and then pictures about everything. So I'll just cover the area disturbance right now. Frank, I don't need a permit for that, do I, at this time?
Not, not for silt fence, no.
I know, yeah, he has some silt fencing that's existing. That was there because when we submitted the application, we covered the area disturbance while the initial like exploratory application. So some of that stuff is still in place, but it has to be reinforced.
Yeah, so the neighbor, this is a different location where, where she's requesting, where she's saying there's runoff.
Okay.
Not where the rock are cropping was.
Okay. Just, just so you know, with this part of this application, we're going to consider the whole site as an area disturbance. So when this does get approved, we're going to wrap the whole entire property with a silt fence and construction fence.
That's a good practice.
Yeah, well, it's a lot easier.
Okay, then the last, the last open question from, from, from the resident, the neighbor is whether or not this is a legally, code compliant legally subdivided lot. And some research was done on this, a lot of research was done on this. Frank, I think you said the lot was subdivided in the nineteen eighties?
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll just read what was sent to the neighbor. In, in part, in, in two thousand and four, Richard Spinelli was asked to divide the single lot from one thirty nine into one thirty nine and one thirty one. He did so under the local code provision in effect at the time in nineteen sixty seven until two thousand and eight. And a formal subdivision application was only necessary if the single lot was to be divided into three or more parcels. This was only divided into two parcels.
And that was the code at the time. I, I, I remember it because it was a lot of discussion about how it should be changed and it was subsequently changed.
Right.
So yes, this is a legally compliant subdivision of the, at the code at the time.
Yeah.
When it was done. It wouldn't be now, but it is, it was then. Okay, all right. I think unless anybody has anything else, I think for the planning board, our next step is probably a, a site visit. And we can arrange that at our mutual convenience. I think the last time we did a site visit, we went on Saturday. But with everybody working from home now, maybe we can arrange for another time, but arrange for someone, the, the contractor or something to be there, maybe to walk us through it. Or, you know, you guys figure out on your end and Amber will coordinate it for us. In the meantime, then just work with Esteban and Susan and, and anything else you need from us as far as any questions that arise, on questions that you have heard from us, you know, we'll get through this application.
Esteban, Susan, can I ask you a question? Is it already, if I email you guys updated to go through the review process? Is that fine?
Yeah, that's fine. And also give me a call at the office to just to sit down and go over the memo as well.
Okay, because I'm, I'm, I'll probably call you on Friday, if that's all right. I'd like to know where you like the percolation test done in the soil borings.
Okay.
Okay, all right, that's, that's that, I think, unless anybody has anything else for the applicant. Okay, Brumstone, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
That brings us to the end of the meeting. Anybody have anything else for this evening? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn then.
So moved.
Second.
Guys really work well together. All those in favor, we'll just do a voice vote. All those in favor. Yeah, thank you, everyone, for, for your work on this. It was a lot of work done on the applications tonight. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.